Good evening, Byram Hills. I'd like to have a motion to open the meeting at 6:57 PM to go into executive session.
Some of.
To, oh, sorry, to discuss 2.1 personnel matter administrative tenure, 2.2 personal matter teacher tenure, 2.3 negotiations matter BHTA, and 2.4 district matter security update.
So moved second.
All in favor? See you in a few.
Sorry, I kind of, something's done now.
Welcome, everyone. Thank you for joining us tonight. Go ahead, Jason.
All right. Good evening, Byram Hills and esteemed guests. We went into executive session at 6:55 PM, and we discussed personnel matter administrative tenure, personnel matter teacher tenure, negotiations matter BHTA, and district matter security update. So with that, can we please rise for the president?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, public, and justice for all.
All right. Are there any comments from the public?
Just one from the superintendent. Did anybody happen to notice the student artwork that's up here as we were all saying the pledge? I was really struck by that. Bryce Baskin.
Epic design.
That is pretty cool.
Right? They always say, stop and smell the roses. It's amazing.
That's amazing. Okay. Any revisions and adoptions of the agenda? I don't think we have any. All right. Moving on to consent agenda. 6.1 personnel, 7.1 CSE, sub-CSE, CPSE recommendations, and consent agenda business may have a motion.
So moved.
All those in favor? Okay.
Yeah. So there are some delicious cookies on this table for our board members tonight.
Summer gone.
Summer gone. No names. Jason came into executive session after opening the meeting, eating his cookie. And some small tokens of our appreciation for our board and their years of continued dedication and service to Byram Hills. We have received from New York State School Boards Association recognition documents, which some of the board members will still take pictures of it, tape to their fridge, and send it to me tonight in a text message, which I love. But really, for dedicated leadership in public education and continuing service to the children of this community. So I was interviewed, not for a job, by a grad student today who said, you know, how would you define your relationship with the board? And I said, perfect. We have, and she said, well, what contributes to that? And I said, well, we have really well-meaning members of our Board of Education who care very much about every child, and each come with their own set of skills that they contribute to this community. So how fortunate we are to have that. I don't know that anyone else can say that in the world. So I am grateful to work with this board and grateful to take a moment in front of our esteemed administrators and our security personnel and our auditor to thank you for everything that you are doing. So congratulations. Thank you. And Lisa Jacob, Vice President. Mia Di Pietro. Lori Kaner. Lara Stangle. Petri Verma.
Who also knows how to put in a sink.
We learned to use more skills than just for service. And Scott Lee. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We are, we are fortunate to have you in this community. Thank you, David. Honored.
Okay. Thank you, Jen. All right. We're going to move a few of the agenda items out of order, and we're going to go to item 13, new business. And we have with us here Craig Hauser from Neurocky Smith, outside auditor, who is going to discuss the report, audit report.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Craig Hauser. I'm a senior manager with Neurocky Smith. Here to present the external audit for the District of Byram Hills for the year ended June 30, 2024. To begin, I'd like to thank the District and the Board for your continued confidence and commitment as your external auditors. For tonight's presentation, I have a small, one-page presentation that summarizes the financial statements. So please feel free to interrupt at any time if you have any questions, as it is a long document to be summarized in one page. To begin, the scope of our services. We were contracted to audit the financial statements for the year ended June 30, 2024. In accordance with generally accepted auditing standards and government auditing standards, we issued a single audit of the district's major federal award programs for the year ended June 30, 2024, which is a financial statement as well as a compliance audit. We audited the district's actual classroom activity funds, which are on a cash basis of accounting, and issued a separate report again as June 30, 2024. Lastly, we issued a management letter presenting our findings and recommendations on improving accounting procedures and internal controls. As far as audit readiness and responsiveness, the closing of books and records were by the mid-August, which allowed us to perform an audit, which over two weeks span. At this time, I'd remiss not to thank Kelly and Susan for their excellent cooperation and work throughout the audit. It is two weeks. We are kind of in their ear and constantly ask them questions and requests for about two weeks at a time. We're here for a full week, and then the next week is a follow-up of any loose ends we may have to tie up. They do with a smile on their face all the time. It is a lot at once, and it's also kind of right in the middle of the summer. So thank you again for all that you do for us, making it an easy process. And because of that, we happen to have a timely filing of financial reports due tonight for the financial statements with New York State, the October 15 deadline. I'm happy to say we have a clean and modified opinion on all audit reports. For the financial position of the district, the general fund annual budget was within the tax cap brought down by New York State and operated positively when compared to the budget. The general fund fund balance amounts, which restricted funds as well as unrestricted funds, are all within reasonable and legal limits of the general fund. There was a negative change in the general fund fund balance this year, and this is mainly due to the inter-fund transfers to the capital projects funds for ongoing capital projects. Capital assets net depreciation charges totaled $61.4 million for the district, and this is due to total capital project expenditures of $948,000 this year, which is again due to various projects going on throughout the district and is funded by the budget transfer I mentioned before from the general fund. The district was able to reduce long-term indebtedness by $2.5 million. This is mainly due to principal payments on the bonds. Total other post-employment benefit obligation, which is an actuarial determined number, increased $528,000 to a total of $157.5 million. And again, another actuarial determined number, which is the total proportionate share of the net pension liabilities of the TRS and ERS systems, is $7.4 million compared to total net position liabilities of $1.5 million in the prior year. And this is due to the favorable market conditions in the fiscal year. Lastly, for our findings and recommendations, I'm happy to say there are no material weaknesses or significant deficiency in internal control. And we did have one current recommendation that has already been implemented regarding capital asset inventory. Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you so much. Any questions? For Craig? Nope. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Craig.
Appreciate it, Craig.
Thanks.
So to adopt, right? Can I have a motion to adopt, adopting the external audit report for '23, '24 fiscal year?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor? All right. Great. So now we will go back to the regular agenda and on to item 10, special report, school security. And we have with us Brian Shanahan of Altaris and Brian Hendry, the coordinator of the Byram Safety and Security, well, the coordinator.
Yes.
And we turn it over to you gentlemen.
All right. Brian Hendry has introduced the safety and security coordinator for Byram Hill School District. Just want to give everyone a brief overview of what we've done over the past year here as far as improvements, training, and how we've stayed up to date with our state mandates. We all know that safety and security at our schools is constantly evolving, and we are making sure that we're staying up to date with the best practices nationwide through communication, training, and problem-solving as a collective group, which is what we do at our district-level meetings and our building-level meetings. As far as our improvements this past year, we've made improvements with communication by adding district-level, district-wide portable radios that gives us the opportunity to communicate building to building during emergencies when necessary. We've also updated each building, each school with window and door decals, and that labels each classroom, each office, each exit entrance door with a specific number or letter corresponding with the floor plan. And in regards to the floor plan, we have updated our floor plans and geographical maps of the campuses to enhance our first responder preparedness for any response when they, when they come. And this is a huge step. We have, it's a digital program that created these maps, and we have it digital and hard copies for ourselves. Like I said, it's labeling entrances, all the emergency equipment in the buildings, and all of our utility shut-offs, and so on and so on. Anything that a first responder, police, fire, EMS would need to know where it's at when they come to our buildings. As far as our New York State mandates, last year they came down with a nice list of mandates for us to, to get up to date with as far as our district level and our building level plans. So we completed that and turned that in in time. So we are up to date with all that, and we are currently moving along with all of our, our drills and keeping up to date with the state mandates as far as those drills are gone.
My name is Brian Shanahan, the senior vice president from Altaris. Thank you for having, thank you, Board, for having us here tonight. What you get when you have Brian as a coordinator assigned to your district is all the other coordinators in Westchester County that we have working for Altaris. So it's one team that we are able to share a lot of information. We appreciate a lot of the work we've done here in the district over the last several years, not only training, but working with the teams. Some of the big things we always look at is, like Brian had mentioned, is making sure you're always in compliance with New York State. But beyond that, what else are we, what else are our improvement opportunities, whether that be infrastructure or that be the training aspect, and debriefing on any major incidents that we've seen unfortunately occur throughout the country over the last several years, engaging where we may be and where, how, options that we may have to improve upon. Many of the thing, many of these items are presented in your emergency plans. Each of the buildings, as we are very well aware of, have confidential building-level emergency plans, which have exactly that, confidential information that may not be able to be shared in a public session on this. But I would like to reassure your community and you as a board that you were doing everything possible to make sure we keep our schools as safe, not just for the compliance purposes, but always looking for any improvement opportunities that present themselves. And part of the drills that Brian had mentioned, we always do that in preparation for muscle memory, but you've also very much engaged in threat assessment. As we've seen in a lot of these major incidents, there are signs and things that have been missed, and that's one thing your district has done a very good job at, not only training, but embracing and practicing the threat assessment in a nationally recognized model. So really nice job with your district, and we'll continue to support and work with you when we talk about safety and security as well.
Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you so much for all that you're doing, for being here tonight.
Thank you for having us.
For the community, they spent a significant amount of time with the board in executive session, some questions and answers, so.
And with our auditorium.
And our auditors, right.
We did have our share.
So here they do a public, they just do a public quick open. Yeah.
Thank you so much again. Thank you.
Good night. Thank you. I was wondering, how does seating range?
And now for, for the main event we've all been waiting for, for our esteemed guest.
Kevin, that was fun.
Did you have to undo my work?
We have our curriculum conversation with our team of administrators, and I know, Tim, you're going to lead the conversation, so I'll turn it to you.
Thank you. I want to welcome everyone here. Thank you so much for your time, and thanks to the Board for having the administrative team here. We're always excited to talk about curriculum. Every October, we come together to share our administrative goals. You have the copy of the goals in your jacket. So feel free, if you have questions about the administrative goals at any point, to ask about them. We are going to take a little bit of a change this year. Normally, we have the entire administrative team here, but we are bringing a subset so we can go a little bit deeper into our goals. And specifically, what I want to talk about tonight is almost a second part to the data report I shared last month. This is really looking at the ways we assess the other things we value. And we've been talking for years about how we assess the things like critical thinking, creativity, communication, leadership, and all those other values that we hold on to that we know are really important in educating the whole child. So tonight, we're going to try to unpack that a little bit. So I'm dividing this into two conversations. The K5 conversation, we'll talk about K5 curriculum, some of the data that goes into making curricular decisions. And then we're going to swap seats, and the secondary folks will come in, and we'll look at some things we've been doing at the secondary level to assess the things we value. So with that, we're going to jump in. I will just quickly share our district mission. So Chris, you don't have to read it. It's up there unless you want to recite it for us, so you're fine.
Even with.
I use it to go to sleep at night.
I don't want you to do that. And so we're going to jump right in, and I'm going to start with our newbie who's been on the job for four months. Has it been four months yet, Megan?
Three and a half.
It's like four years, though, right? You know it that well.
Yes.
So Megan, could you talk a little? You jumped right in on July 1st. You came in and started working with teachers. The Board knows. You hear me talk a lot about how much happens in the summer in Byram Hills. We have our administrators put together a lot of workshops for our teachers to come in and collaborate and work on really deep curricular work. So you came in, you jumped right into these meetings with teachers, got to know teachers. You worked on the science curriculum, the literacy curriculum, a lot of different projects that were happening. Could you just give us a general sense of your impression of what you thought of in those first summer days when you were in and what you learned from our faculty?
I think one of the first things I said to Tim on July 1st is I cannot believe how many people are hard at work here in the summertime. And I think that's a true testament to the educators in the Byram Hill School District. The teachers are so committed, dedicated, highly intelligent, and really have your students' interests best at heart. And so they really capitalize on this time of the summer to do all that smart thinking and planning when you have that quiet, right? Summer is that perfect time for quiet. And so what has this looked like? So in literacy, just working with our teacher teams around, looking at a curriculum and seeing where are we continuing to enhance and build in opportunities for learning that is aligned to the resources we use as a district and how we believe kids learn best. In science, we, our, our teachers that are working with the No-Adam curriculum, we really looked at how can we build in more opportunities for units of study so that our kids have more exposure to the content of science, but also those critical thinking skills that we're really trying to foster within that work. So a lot of the work in the summertime that I have observed is just teachers coming together in a Byram Hills way, collaborative spirit, in terms of really planning and understanding what can we do better this year based off what we learned from last year.
So let's jump into literacy. So the Board knows you've been hearing from me over the past two years all the work around literacy, starting with convening a study group that involved parents, teachers, and administrators studying the research-based practices. And we launched an assessment audit in our literacy to look at all the ELA assessments that we're doing, which is driving our MTSS plan. We've been running in-service courses for our teachers and a lot of other professional development around literacy. So literacy has been a real focus. I know that Megan watched our board meetings around and my presentations on literacy, which is why I think it feels like four years you've been here, because you really knew our literacy goals. So now that you've been working with our teachers over the next couple of years, or over the last couple of months, what do you see as our top three literacy priorities going forward this year? What are you working on with our, with our teachers?
So I've been engaging in a lot of conversations with the staff around what have been some of the successes, challenges, what are your hopes of our work together? And also just being inside the classrooms and starting to see what learning looks like from the perspective of the student. It's a lot of building off of really good things that are already happening. And I think that's really important to really shout out as a district. We're talking about across a grade of eight to 10 classrooms. So eight to 10 classrooms, eight to 10 unique teaching styles. And teachers are really working hard together to really cultivate a shared vision around what is literary instruction for our students and how do we believe students learn best. We also have a lot of new teachers either to the Byram Hill community or to a grade team. And it's building the conversations that our grade teams are having and now starting to say, what does that look like across K to five? How do we really streamline that bridge for our children when they enter in the age of four or five and then lead us to go to middle school? So a big focus and goal is building off the smart work that this district has been doing, making sure teachers' voices are part of this process, and we're really anchoring into what do we actually see our students learning and doing inside the classrooms, cultivating a shared vision, and really anchoring around how do we utilize our curriculum resources to best meet our children's needs? And what instructional practices do we employ that speak to how our students learn best?
So what's an example of how you work with teachers? Can you give us a little bit of the structures that exist in Byram Hills so you can actually do this work?
Yes. So there's a lot of smart structures that are already here that both Peggy and Dave have really established along with Lisa and Janine. First and foremost, just the amount of collaboration and communication that's taking place of the, the teacher teams. Capitalizing on the ELA advisory groups, the math advisory groups, and the science advisory groups. What that is, it's a member of each grade team, K through five, that comes together to have vertical conversations around specific content-focused areas.
Why are vertical conversations important? Why not just stick on the grade level?
Yeah, incredibly important. Because when we're trying to talk about continuity and consistency across the K to five continuum, then we have to have opportunities and space for educators to come together and talk about what does it look like in kindergarten? How do we bridge that to first grade and continue to run that process? That's how you get alignment, is when we really start to have teachers across grades and across classrooms starting to really talk about instruction. So that's one of the structures that I think is really successful here that we're building off of.
So one thing we've talked about at the, I've talked with you about is that we have teachers who are coming brand-new or a couple of years' experience. So they have been educated in literacy in the last, let's say, five years, maybe six years. And then we have teachers who have been here 20 to 30 years who are educated a couple of decades ago. There's been a lot of philosophical shifts in literacy instruction in those two decades, three decades. So we were dealing with a workforce that has different views of teaching literacy. Part of our work started two years ago was bringing people together around research-based practices. Peggy did a book read last year with her faculty. Dave is introducing a book read this year with his faculty so that we're developing common. When Megan talks about the common vision, it's around having some assured experiences or insured instructional practices that we know are based in research as well as our curriculum. So I'm wondering, and Megan, Peggy, or Dave can jump in, is how are we, we're currently working with a curricular program that will be adopted during the pandemic, and that is something we're evaluating. So just to put that on the table, that we're looking at that. But how does that fit into our work? Where are we in using that Wonders curriculum as? Is it research-based? And to what degree does the instruction inform? Or is that, does that inform the instruction?
So the curriculum that we utilize is Wonders, which is a research-based curriculum, it's third-party tested. And what the teachers are doing is, a curriculum is, a curriculum is a resource to support the teaching inside the classroom. So it's coming together, looking at Wonders and saying, what do we value about this program? How does it meet our needs for our students? And what are we choosing to really lift from this as a resource and support inside our classroom? We also know that not one program is the answer to anything, right? That is just a piece of the puzzle. So just the smart work that I know Coleman Hill has done around, hey, we identified a huge need inside our school around Haggerty, around phonemic awareness. We're seeing a space where our children aren't getting enough opportunities to really understand letter sounds. Peggy, maybe you want to talk about that, smart work?
Yes, thank you. So for Haggerty, here at Coleman Hill, we piloted the program last year, and now this year, in all kindergarten classes, we are implementing Haggerty. What, how you can think of Haggerty is it is the bridge to get to reading and writing using speaking and listening. It's actually slowing down the rush of getting into reading and writing, even though it's alive in every single classroom in kindergarten. But it's whole group instruction really focusing on the phonemic awareness and the phonics skills that children need to pronounce sounds so that we can help them pronunciate. And they learn to listen and speak to syllables, one-syllable word, multi-syllabic words, in a whole group instruction. And really, what you're hearing from the children is it's a lot of rhyme time. It's a lot of listening for the different initial, medial, and ending sounds in words that we might be rushing through. And instead of rushing through it, we're actually giving time and effort to the facial structures that children need to develop linguistics. And we know that the development of literacy is complicated, and it's giving children more confidence in how they speak and how they listen. And just last week, we had five kindergarten teachers observing. One kindergarten teacher, and some of you saw it last year. It's this multi-kinesthetic way of how to manipulate words and sounds with your hands and your mouth. And we got to really unpack the practice of how we do it with a direct instruction in a whole group setting. So all the children are hearing it and getting it together.
So it's oral language proficiency, right? It's about the expression and oral language development, but then connecting that to letters, letter recognition, to writing, and then eventually to phonics. And there's research based on that. Our brains are wired for oral language expression. So we know babies just start talking, they start imitating us. But you're not going to learn to read automatically. We have to rewire the brains for reading, which is different than oral language. But there's a connection between those two, which helps the process. We've realized that. We studied it two years ago, and last year started to work with this program with our kindergarten teachers.
And our four, five, and six-year-olds are reporting a lot of joy during this time. If they don't have the production and the pressure of reading and writing, which we need them to do too. But this is a moment of five minutes in a day. It's a small time.
Just going to ask.
That gives them pure joy of just working on how they pronunciate and how they listen to the development of sounds.
So then my question is, if we're talking about how we use data to inform our decisions, how do we know this is having an impact? How will we measure the fact that Haggerty or that our curriculum is actually working? What are some tools we're using to measure that?
Do you want me to carry it over to science?
We'll talk about it. Well, before science, I can go also to Dave with, if you want to talk a bit about observation process in terms of curriculum, and Megan, if you could talk a little, we'll get into MTSS and our new universal screener as well.
Yeah, the, the, I come back to what Tim said. When we really think of the scope of our faculty and the fact that someone could have been, or the way they were taught, right? They were taught whole language as a child, right? That's very different than maybe they were trained as a teacher at T C, right? And now we're kind of like structured literacy with the science of reading. It's like a very interesting perspective. But where I think we're in a very good spot, and to get to Tim's point about the observations, we're having these conversations in the advisories and grade-level meetings about our best practices. What's working for a child that struggles with X, Y, or Z? How do you extend this activity within the curriculum for a child that's really excelling in whatever it may be? And I think through the observation process, what we're noticing and have good conversations about And I think through the observation process, what we're noticing and have good conversations about is we're seeing some of those common practices. And so when we're giving feedback to tenured or on-tenured teachers, it's about what are the common practices on the grade levels to hit certain standards? That we think may be a trend that we need to focus on, right? Maybe the data is showing, hey, this is a trend really and a standard that we need to look, why is this either a strength generally? Or, or maybe it's a weakness and how do we address that? So through, through that observation process, we're able to really hone in on those, those practices. And then we're talking about it, which is kind of where we're having that.
One quick question about looking at take reading as an example with all the changes and evolution in the program and the approach. Some of it, I'm guessing, just within a year, you could probably look at as a classroom teacher and say, this feels right, this is working. I think that more students are getting to a better place, or maybe the reverse, and then you move your trigger. But I'm guessing also some of the effect is going to take maybe several years. Maybe you don't know until middle school whether this stuff is like going in the right direction or not. So I guess how long a runway do you give it? And how do you think about monitoring cohorts as they continue to progress?
Yeah, I think that's a fantastic question. And I come back to, you make me think of two things. One, the, the environment of the conversations, right, is so important to me because we're just there, right? Because of us recognizing to have the conversations that we all maybe had a little bit different background, we're all trained a little differently. There's all new research, right? We're at the place where we're all open book with that, we're being transparent with that. Not that we weren't before, but it's just, it's all we talk about now, right? So I think that's one. And then two, I, I don't know if I have an exact answer. I think it will take some time, right? I think at least in the upper grades, we can always look at the state testing scores, right? We have the universal screener STAR now, right? When, when we start to look at that over a period of time, what trends are we noticing? And then it'll be a, a good conversation with Kim and Angela too, like what are you seeing out of your kids as they come to sixth grade? And then it's identifying the standards that maybe need some more support? Or how are we actually hitting this standard and do we need to make an adjustment?
Someone on our esteemed panel, just explain what a universal screener is for our community. You might not know what that is and.
Kevin?
I see he wants to take it. He just threw his lorry.
Kevin, if you do that and talk about the universal screener, talk about our start of the new universal screener this year and then addressing maybe Scott's question if you have thoughts on that as well.
Universal screener is, I think it's best to think about it as though, um, we describe it often as like a net, if you're, if you're fishing, you cast a wide cast net out there to see with the purpose of trying to identify what students are in need of specific supports. It doesn't necessarily give you what the specific supports are. What it does is it gives us a viewpoint as, as a class, as a grade level, to look at how are our students performing relative to internal benchmarks that we set or state benchmarks that are set as well. And what that does is it helps to focus our data teams on looking specifically at groups of students who are in need of additional support, whether that's on, on all different ends of the spectrum that we have. It's a, think of it as a, a, a focusing tool for us to allow us to zoom in on that. Universal screeners are given to all students. At this point, our STAR screener, Tim and I were working with the MTSS team last year. We identified STAR as the screener that we wanted to pilot.
We studied five.
We spent quite a bit of time last year studying all the different ones. And we were expecting a small group of teachers to want to pilot STAR. And we were pleasantly surprised and the teacher said, no, we've done a lot of studying of this, we want to do this for all students. And so all students in grades K through five at this point have taken our STAR screener. That screener happens three times throughout the year, which is to lead into the question that I heard you ask Scott, which is really about time differences. So if you go back fifteen years or so and think about the tools that were available to educators to determine where our students relative to a benchmark. Really what we had was standardized assessments, which were typically given once per year. And you, if you think of it as a doctor's office, that's almost like a postmortem of the school year. It happens at the end of the school year, it's telling you how things perform. What the universal screener allows us to do is like having a physical every year in the beginning of the year. And it helps focus you on what additional tests might you want to do to determine what treatments, if any, are needed to help support good health and good learning health in this, this case. And so by doing it three times a year, it allows us a smaller time scale by which to have these kind of checkpoints. It's almost like having a physical three times per year. And then another outcome from the work that we did with the MTSS team is we studied all the other assessments that are being given across the district, which have evolved over time because of the inquiry of our staff. They've evolved over time to meet the needs of individuals with their individual groups of students. And what we're trying to, to do now, what we're, what we're working on now is thinking about what are the highest leverage assessments that give us the right information for different groups of students? How do we know that this group of kids that came up on the screener need more information in that area? And that's the next step of the work that we're doing. And there's time, there are time differences with each of those.
I can also build off of, here's an example of a short term and a, and one that's going to be longer for us to study and understand. So we looked at the kindergarten STAR screener data. And we noticed that there was a large percentage of students who really struggle, struggle around phonemic awareness, right? So when we came together, reading teachers and I talked about that, we said, well, okay, not every preschool is doing phonemic awareness in a very explicit, methodical way of teaching, right? And we haven't started that work yet with our students. So this doesn't speak to that every child needs an intervention in phonemic awareness. What this speaks to is in tier one, we're going to give them what they need. And we're going to monitor and see how they progress throughout this year through these checks that we're building in as that progress monitoring tool. That's a short term, we'll be able to actually evaluate and say, ha, this is working. A space where we're going to have to study more is when you think of, fluency is one of the first determinants around students comprehension. And often we go to comprehension is an issue, but we, we need to kind of step back and say, let's look at this fluency. Fluency is another skill set that has historically been taught very implicitly, not as explicit, right? So this is a space too where we're starting to look at fluency as a very explicit component of literacy instruction that we're teaching our children and, and giving them those progress monitoring tools. So we're valuing how they're doing. And how will this impact when we get up to WABAS and start talking about comprehension? Is a long-term study we're going to see to really see that success rate.
Yeah, fluency is becoming, research really, an important part of comprehension. And a researcher we're working with now that's working with our teachers told us that often as kids get older, we think it's a comprehension issue. Research is showing it's frequently, high probability it's a fluency issue. And we need to work on direct instruction on fluency and practice. Fluency is measured, does anyone know, it's measured by accuracy in the words, expression, reciprocity.
Good job.
Right, is that right?
Yes.
See, all that studied for two years, it took me two years. So that's something we're learning and we'll be able to study long-term in this data over time. And if our goal is to get kids reading proficiently, proficiently by the end of second, third grade, getting them ready for middle school, we'll now have this really concrete, consistent, research-based tool of measurement year after year, which is exciting. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah.
Sure. Awesome. So it's amazing work with literacy that we're doing. And let's flip to science, Peggy started to jump in there. It's exciting that we're in our second year of piloting the science curriculum, I've mentioned that to you previously. And we've expanded the pilot this year, there's more teachers involved in that. So with Megan and Peggy, you can both talk about, I find this to be a really rigorous science curriculum. We looked at thirteen programs before we were satisfied with one. This one seems to have a very simple instructional model, but it's also very high level in terms of the expectations of student vocabulary and reading. Could you each talk about what the instructional model is and what you're noticing in classrooms?
So, um, No Atom is a very simple, simple structure when you look at it on the outside. We have five routines and throughout every unit, children are going through these five routines. The first routine is, I'm going to introduce to a complex text that's grade-level appropriate, nonfiction on a science content. Kids are then going to engage in conversation, discussion around what they're learning. They're going to have an opportunity to plan either investigation that goes to the scientific method or the engineering by design process they're going to get to do. And then they're going to come out and reflect on this process. The beauty of it is that inside each of these routines, there's high-level thinking and engagement. So kids are really looking at and learning, speaking about second grade. Second grade has been studying the properties of matter, right? So the kids are learning about the vocabulary, high-level vocabulary, introduced to a text, starting to question properties of matter, and how does that impact base level sound with, right? Then they're going into, then doing investigation where they're now seeing all these different types of materials and they're starting to classify and group them based off of properties that they see that they have in common. This is all a way of kids getting to look at something every day that they come across and start being able to see connections between two. And then what does that mean? What might this tell me about this property? Is it porous? Is it transparent? Is it something that can bend, right? That's all the high-level thinking that's going into that science method in a very simple five routine.
And students at that level, let's say first grade, second grade, have high-level conversations?
Absolutely, and I think again, teachers, the teachers at both schools are so smart and they want to make connections across content areas. This is what we do as elementary teachers, we try to maximize our time with children, right? And one of the best ways we get kids to demonstrate critical thinking is through questioning and discussion. And we all know, have a conversation with a four or five-year-old, they've got some of the best questions, right? So let's put them in front of a text where they're really learning something and starting to question it around an idea, a principle, a theory. And now you're really starting to get high-level questions. The kids have an opportunity to then go and explore and actually go through a process with.
Peggy, you had the chance to co-teach. What was that like? What were some of the, the content that kids were learning?
I co-taught a lesson in first grade and it was on the water cycle. So children were talking about precipitation, evaporation, and they were singing these songs with these big vocabulary words. The lesson flowed quite well from whole group to small group. But everything that Megan just described in terms of what the children can do with the vocabulary and the comprehension, as well as following the scientific method, five and six and seven-year-olds were able to execute that in the classroom in a first-grade room.
I walked into a second-grade classroom and asked the kid what he was doing. And he said, we have to create two models for our hypothesis. What is a hypothesis? He was able to tell me, and they're using words like that. And I know when we first looked at this curriculum, teachers thought, there's no way kids are going to learn these vocabulary. But they can, they can learn multi-syllabic words, am I getting that right?
Are, and I think that's what connects right back to the Haggerty for our kindergarteners is these big words in the science curriculum. We're going to see them pick it up faster and faster because of how we're slowing down the oral pronunciation of these words.
What grades is No Atom being used in?
Uh, first grade?
First through five, but our kindergarten teachers are, again, building our process. These routines, they can be embedded within what we do inside a literacy lesson, math lesson. So K to five, we're looking at question and discussion techniques.
So we, not sure if we'll reach a conclusion at the end of this year or not, if we'll need another reader study. But eventually we may be coming to the board to adopt the curriculum. But we'll have a deeper evaluation of it probably mid-year before the end of this year. And Dave, I want to jump over to you and speaking of evaluating programs or processes, we recently departmentalized at this point, last year, Dave departmentalized.
That's right.
So if you can first explain how you departmentalized and what your goals were in doing so? Why did you reach that decision? How did you come to that? And then we'll talk about how you're evaluating success.
Yeah, I think it probably started September of my first year as Peggy's AP. I'm like, oh, should we turn this into a middle school? No, you know, I, I think I was amazed by the work and responsibility on an elementary teacher, right? And I think one of the responsibilities we have in the upper elementary is, and you see it in our goals, right? It's about what, what opportunities do we give them to be ultimately prepared for the independence, the leadership of middle school, right? That kind of like drives everything we do. So I think Peggy and I spoke about it for a few years and then, you know, 2020, we won't talk about for a couple of years. And then we kind of came back to it when Lisa and I started working together. And the fifth-grade team was very receptive to it. You know, the couple of things, right? We had teachers that really enjoyed or really had expertise or wanted to further be experts in certain areas, right? That was a, a, a kind of a point of discussions for us. And then it was like, let's go study some neighboring districts, what do they do, right? So last year in the fall, we went to a few different neighboring districts, learned a lot. I, I won't get into all of that, but it was good to see things we did want to do, things we didn't want to do. What does the model look like? How do kids literally walk down the hallway between classes, right? We were getting to that much minutia. We ultimately decided on teams of two. One teacher teaching social studies and language arts, one teacher teaching math and science, right? So we have four teams of two on the fifth grade right now. And I think we're a place right now where we're having lots of conversations with kids in the cafeteria, in the hallway with, with teachers. You know, the simple question of, was it twenty-eighth day of school? Twenty-eight days, we've only been here twenty-eight days. How's it going? How do you like it, right? And some teachers say, well, the time goes by really fast. And I'm like, well, what does that mean? Like, no, but like in a good way, because I'm really diving deep into a certain area, like deeper than before. They're like, I think I am, I think I'm having an opportunity. You're teaching the same thing in the morning and the afternoon, maybe there was a little tweak you wanted to make, right?
Yeah, it's just a mood bio.
Yeah, yeah. Very passionate about departmentalization. And then with, with kids, I think the big thing students are saying right now, they love the time to move between classes, there's more movement. And some kids are also, and I'll make a connection to the middle school. I think the opportunity to know another adult, another teacher on a deeper level. I mean, I think for those of you who've known me, that's going back to Haligan from the middle school presentation years and years ago, how important it is for our kids to know adults on a deep level. So I don't know what your question was, but that's where I'm at with departmentalization.
Why you were doing it. So that was the question which I think you answered. And then I, I guess the age-old question is, how will we know we're successful? Is it meeting its goal? Is it creating the type of learner you want and are they successful in the middle school? How do we evaluate this? What metrics do we use to evaluate departmentalization and so on, on kids?
Sure. I think part of it is those conversations about where teachers are at with the depth that they're able to go into. And then I think we have the, you know, the data that will be coming out of state exam scores, out of the screeners. You know, what are our, how are our kids performing over a period of time? And then I think it's the measurement. I think I called Kim and Angela a couple of weeks ago when we're getting ready to do the character strong pushings in fourth and fifth. I said, what's the, what's the character that kids really need to work on, right? And I think you both said cooperation. So just, just that, also that conversation vertically to the middle school about how prepared our kids are for sixth grade, along with those other data points.
So we know in our, in our universal screener program we have, it does have a social-emotional screener. We're not using it now, but it is a point of conversation that it could be some piece of evidence we use in a similar way to measure long-term impact over time. I could go on a lot longer, we've been about thirty minutes with them, I want to get to our secondary folks. But any questions or anything I'm missing that the board wants to dive into or anything anyone wants to offer?
Tim, did you just say that the universal screener has a social-emotional piece also?
Yes, it's part of the, the suite of assessments.
So what are some of the other pieces of it? How, how is it sort of broken down? Is this something that's given over days, weeks, months? What does it look like for you guys or is it one day?
Do you know the social-emotional screener at STAR?
Or do you just mean the?
I just mean the STAR assessment.
Do universal screeners in general, what does that look like for them?
Twenty, fifteen to twenty minutes for that screener.
Picks up all of these pieces that you're looking for to assess.
There's a math one and a literacy one right now that we're, our kids are engaging in, and the younger kids do early literacy.
Yes, we don't do the math.
There's, there's three main components, early literacy for our younger learners, pre-readers. And then there's a literacy component and then there's the math component. It's given three times per year. And when we were studying, looking for a screener last year, one of the things that came out very clearly from all of our teachers was they were looking for something that took the least amount of time out of class to do. That was something that was very appealing. And the piece that led us to STAR, in addition to the time that the assessment takes, was the number of data points that they have. They have millions and millions of data points and very sophisticated statistical modeling behind, the engine behind all of that that allows us to really get quite a bit of data based off of a very small assessment time that our students are dedicating to it. And so far, one assessment in, that's proving out to be quite good. And, and back to Scott's question about time and Dave's point about how will we know this over long-term? Three data points per year for our students, if you were to fast-forward this work, you know, years down the road, many of our students stay with us from kindergarten all the way through their academic career. And so we'll be able to look longitudinally about cohort data, quasi-cohort data, things like that, to see the impact of some of the changes that.
That's great. And it's great to know just also that it's, it's sort of compact and that it's not taking away from those kids' learning time.
It's very highly structured assessment in that it's a low time of investment on the kids and a, a high information.
And unlike some of our other assessments, it's not dependent upon who's giving it and how they're giving it. So there's more standardization of it's.
It'll help with the data too, right?
This is replacing our previous screener we were using, which was taking about an hour for each assessment, two hours or more. And that was a big decision factor. And then the predictability of this particular program, it's quite strong. It's predictive nature over time, especially as you take more assessments.
Excellent, thank you.
Anything else for the K to five group? See, watch the priority very well thought out. Okay, team, thank you. There's some exciting things to share from our secondary group and I'm going to jump right into our middle school. And something we've been working on for quite a time with the middle school. And you've heard me talk about a data story, you know, what is the, the story of our student performance? How are we measuring things beyond just state testing data and the standardized testing data that we have? We've had starts and stops over the past decade, literally, of working on something like this. And we're finally ready to unveil what we've been working on over the past couple of years that has led to this. So Kim, first I want to set the context for this. Talk about the data reports that Dr. Powderley started two decades ago, really.
Sure.
What that was like, because you and I as chairpeople both experienced doing those reports.
So we know that HCC has a rich tradition with academic excellence. And it does go back to Dr. Powderley. And it was driven by data. He believed that all of our decisions should be really based on data that we have to use to inform our instruction and support our students. So for ten, fifteen years, that drove our work as a middle school, as a social studies chair, as a math chair. And when, when you really think about it, it started, we, we always use multiple measures. And we started to evolve and we thought, you know, these state tests aren't giving us any new revelations anymore. We use them, they're an important part of how we support our students and our instruction. But they've almost become more of the floor of what we expect and what we must do. And what's our ceiling? You know, because we're at Byron Hills, what are we expecting? You know, because we're at Byron Hills, what do we expect? And how do we know if we're challenging our kids to think critically, to collaborate, to, to be creative and to communicate? How do we assess that? And so that's where we started to move into talking departmentally with the chairs and directors about what that would look like. And after many iterations and a lot of collaboration, using those skills that we're trying to promote with our students, we landed on our data stories, which we used last year to really bring to fruition. So some of it's up there. We, basically what we wanted to know was how do we know our students are learning? How do we know, we can, how do we assess what we value? Those critical thinking skills, those creative skills? And so each department was asked, what are you doing that is so meaningful with your students? And how can a data report work with you to give you information? To help you know more about what is good for your, what's working in this area of your department and your discipline? And where we can grow? Because we didn't want these to be stories of magnificence. We know we're doing good work, but in order to get better, we also have to take a look at where do we need to continually refine our work? And so thus we have the data stories and.
It's really focusing on that idea of continuous improvement and driving us that way. So the board has access to this in your packet where it gives a summary on each slide, but then links to each department, chairperson, directors detailed report.
So each department identified an area and then even developed an essential question where for English, they had the topic of student-led learning, but then there was a more focused essential question that guided their work as a department for the year. And they, depending on the department, it was amazing when we're in the balcony and we're looking down. So Angelo and I are in the balcony with Tim and we're looking down at each department doing their work. And what I think we were most excited about was number one, there's a six, eight progression in each department, meaning no matter what department you look at in their focus, the sixth grade starts with very focused support and analyzing their student work. And then by the time they're in eighth grade, there's a greater onus on the students, more trust and delivery that they can actually look and reflect on their work and assess how they're doing as independent learners. And what, no matter, you look at English, you look at social studies, math, fine arts, they were able to, we see the growth six, eight. Other component that I think we're most excited about, so there's, we didn't want to put anyone in a box. We wanted this to be organic to their department. But when you take a look at it, all of those skills that we know post-secondary are so critical, are being fostered through this work in all of these departments. It's like a web of support for our students so that we know they're prepared for the high school.
Is this something to continue every year? Is this, are all the chairs and directors write a report every year?
This is a journey. It is going to be a report or a data story each year. Some departments will pivot. For example, physical education started by talking about how technology can be utilized for their students' fitness and wellness. And they pivoted to get a little bit more specific. I think Dr. Lamia provided Scott Saunders with some information about the health of our students. And I think it was obesity rates. And when he took a look at it, he realized that Byron Hills is doing exceptionally well. So then the question is why? So he pivoted a little bit. He said, okay, we're not just going to look at how technology affects our overall health of our students. Let's look at what we do with our fitness testing, with the Pacer test. How, what do we do in health class? Also utilizing the technology that gives us feedback about how our students are doing with their fitness? And then say, okay, how, how does that lead into why our kids are, their health and our obesity rates are well below the state and county standards? So that would be a pivot. Social studies, where's Jen? Jen, social studies. We're going to continue our journey in social studies and in English and in math. I'll get to social studies in one second, but I will, I'm going to shift. Can we shift to math for one second? Math, we know they do these rich tasks where the kids are engaged in working together and problem solving and engaging in this rich task. So the math department said, we think we're on the right track and we know we have data to support what we're doing. But our next step for this year is to survey and really engage our students more. So we're going to continue on this, this path, but now we're going to survey our students. The next step in knowing, how are we doing? What can we do to improve? So that's one example of a pivot and one example of continuing forward.
Going deeper with that and learning more about how does, how do these rich tasks inform the students?
It's another database, right? An important one.
Right, so multiple measures, right? We have the state tests still, they're still very important, but we now have the ceiling as well. We also have I Ready. So we, we value all those multiple measures to give us information on how our kids are doing.
Just ask a quick, I'm sorry, can I ask a quick question? First of all, I was incredibly impressed and blown away by those rich tasks. I dug into those methods. Incredible, I mean, I'm reading through all of them. It was great and it was great to see some of the work that the kids are doing. So obviously very rich.
Thank you for looking at it.
No, yeah, I'm blown away by it. So my question is just more about how are you using? I remember when my kids were in middle school, there was a shift in the assessment process. There was the highlighting that was used, remember that? So I'm just curious how that has evolved also and how sort of that's changing and evolving with these rich tasks.
Sure. I think they run parallel. So Tim, you could also jump in, but I, we still utilize, we don't, we don't do the highlighting quite as much, although it's valuable. We, we make sure that when you look at the state standards, the content and the skills that our students are required in each of the grades, we're meeting those standards and we're excelling. So that stays the same. We're still using that information. But to go deeper, then we're also looking at those rich tasks and how our students are thinking critically, how they are collaborating or even be creative problem solvers in those rich tasks. How we assess all of that still is part of our challenge, like for the math department. How do we quantify that? And if it's not quantified qualitative data, that, that information that the teachers possess, how do we share that and then take a look at a six, eight progression? I can tell you it is happening, but there's so much more that we need to do when you say, all right, they're being creative, they're being collaborative, they're being problem solvers. What does that mean? And then how do we take, how do we parse that out? And then let it affect part of our instruction and our curriculum development.
First implementation of the three through eight test started in 2005. And we were really focused on more of those traditional tasks and traditional tests. The standards and thus the assessments have evolved a bit, but we can see a parallel between, we've been focused on rich tasks, gosh, probably for eight years now at least.
Oh, at least, yes.
But when we look at our eighth grade state test results, which are about as high as they can get, I showed you those results, and 93 or something percent of our students reaching proficiency. So I think there's a correlation between this type of work and then traditional assessments as well. So they're really tied together and I think our middle school teachers really understand that connection.
That's great, thank you.
Something I talked to Kim about and we grapple with. So we have, we have nine reports here and then next year we'll have 18, then we'll have 27. I know my multiples are nine, right? So in five years, we'll have 45 reports. How do we scale it? How do we learn from 45 reports? And that's a question we're grappling with that Kevin, Kim and I and Angelo talk about, what we'll do with all these reports at the end of the day? And how can we synthesize that into some quantifiable metric? We don't know an answer to that. We keep grappling with it and I think Kevin, you, you can address the bigger picture of our, our approach to this work around.
Yes, actually Angelo had mentioned something earlier when we were talking through the reports about seeing trends along the reports as well. And, and Kim was talking also about looking at this from like an upward spiraling perspective. What are the things that exist in our culture that are making us successful? Not looking at it from a deficiency mindset to say, what else should we be doing? It's trying to distill down what's the essence of our education here and that allows us to be successful. And that's really the work that we have ahead of us is to think carefully about what do these reports actually show us? What are the questions? All good education starts with good questions. So what questions come up as a result of this? And where are the common threads that we have? What data sources do we have to start building some shared understanding about the systems we use to assess those common things? So we could go a lot deeper into that if you have any questions, but that's just to share.
That's an idea of where do we take all of this to and what are we looking for? I'm going to segue. Angelo, you want to jump in?
So, so I was just thinking, so just going back to Kevin's comment. So when you start reading through these reports, you start looking at, at trends in the reports and the words that stick out the most are collaboration, cooperation. All 21st century skills that we expect of our kids, which are not measurable, easily measured. But you start seeing the instances of what teachers value, what students value in, in the reports. So the more reports we get, the more projects that, that kids are exposed to, the, the higher their level of achievement in those areas.
Those were all deliberate efforts of ours as a district 10 years ago is to work on those types of skills as well. And as we're thinking about how we measure these things, we may circle back to these reports. I want to go to Chris and we've been talking about how we measure some of those intangible things. So as we know, Chris has shifted the master schedule of the high school. And we're in our fourth year now of that master schedule shift. So can you just remind us of why we shifted and then how are we measuring its impact? So you know, how do we know that the reasons you changed it, that's actually happening?
First of all, there isn't a person who says it isn't better.
That's one way to.
Just walk down the hallway at 8:10 and you can hear birds chirping right now where before you didn't. Yeah, so it's hard to believe that we're in the fourth year and, you know, COVID was actually something that I think assisted our community in moving that forward, which is a rare thing to say because we were really, really married to that old drop schedule. And back in 2018, 2019, we started the conversation with students, asking them about their overall experience. And what we got back was that an education at Byron Hills High School, it's terrific, but it really wears. And so we had a number of teachers and administrators who shadowed students. We met up and partnered with Challenge Success in the University of Michigan. And one of the very first things that I did was shadow a 10th grader. And it seems every time I shadow kids, I get 7:00 AM health for whatever reason. So, but starting the day, yeah, starting the day with 7:00 AM health. By the end of that day, I was exhausted. And somebody who has five kids and is used to being exhausted, this was a different level of exhaustion. And we really started to think about every one of those faculty members who went through those days shadowing our kids, came out saying the same thing, I am exhausted. And so we really started to explore that factory model of, of education that we were supplying for our kids. Even though the numbers that we got back from them after college were that we had them really well-prepared, all of the state scores were really remarkable, you know, comparing ourselves to peer districts, everything seemed to be really, really well, going really well. We looked at it, we tried to jump a little bit deeper into what we were seeing. And then that's where our, our partnership with Challenge Success really helped us. Surveying the students, even going down and doing it at the middle school, really seeing what their overall experience was. Being able to look at that and then unpack it and start to look at how we were structuring the schedule, what opportunities they had for socializing, whether they actually had time to eat and digest their food, whether they had time to meet with their teachers outside of those periods? And how many, how many times they were passing in the hallway, something as simple as that. So through that, we were able to come up with the master schedule. And again, one of the other things, looking at their, just to remind everybody, was the sleep that they were getting, less than six hours and 15 minutes a night. The, the engagement levels, kids were doing school. Looking at the amount of parent expectations, they reported it was through the roof of what all of the parents expected of them. They showed a lack of teachers, a care. They believed that their teachers did not care about them as much as we actually knew that they did. So their extracurricular involvement, academic integrity, all of those different areas were what we were looking at. And through the, the great stakeholder meetings that we had, we came up with our master schedule. And we've tweaked it now and we think we have it in a really great spot.
So what feedback are you, you know, what tools are you using to measure the success? So are kids reporting that they have time to socialize? Do they feel not as rushed or exhausted at the end of the day? Are they sleeping more? How do we know that we're actually having an impact based on these changes? Besides, you know, Jen saying you just randomly walk down and ask if you like it. Eventually now we're going to have kids that don't know anything different.
So one thing that I'm really proud of is we actually had one of our science research students who actually did a study on, on that. And his study came back and showed that, yeah, students now are actually sleeping more than before the, the new master schedule was put in, by about 20 to 25 minutes more. We also, you know, in, in doing that and designing the new schedule, there was so much research coming out at that time about sleep and sleep studies. And even the state of California made a law that no high school could start before 8:30 AM. Now, we knew that there were so many different things that went into change in the start time of the school. We also knew that kids wanted more time independently with their teachers outside of the class, outside of their, the class period. So we were able to look at and work with Jen and Tim on implementing a, an office hours. And that office hours has been really something that we see at least 75% of our kids utilize it at least once during the week. Some of our kids are there every day utilizing office hours. But we also know that it gives families the flexibility for allowing kids to maybe sleep in late one or two days during the week, because we know that they're so busy doing things on the outside as well. So things that you might not think that we look at, nurse visits, absenteeism rates, tardiness rates, referrals to the assistant principals, looking at, looking at just the cameras in the hallway when passing times are done to see if there are any kids left in the hallway. So those little things, we, we started to look at them even before we created a new schedule. We wanted to know what we were going to look at.
Chris, you did one, more than one survey from Challenge Success. Do you still plan on doing more surveys or at this point do you think they're not? As just, what do you think about that?
Yeah, so Lauren can speak about it, but she did a survey last year with the Student Leadership Board. We continue to partner with Challenge Success. The last survey we did with them, we felt like it got too tangled up with COVID, hybrid learning and the shift. So we want to, we feel like we're in a good place right now with the schedule where we might be able to do that. And we also want to partner with Kim to make sure that we have that longitudinal data. But, and I'll pass it off to Lauren because she could speak about the survey that she conducted that had elements of Challenge Success in it.
So I work with the Student Leadership Board and they actually asked if they could survey the student body and see if they could measure, you know, more SEL elements of our, you know, school communities. So we partnered with our Challenge Success Committee, so not necessarily the national organization, but the parent group that we have, that we work with, that have students on it and faculty members on it. And we generated a survey based on some Challenge Success questions and some questions from John Crown, John Crown Apple's Belonging Book. And the students went out, they felt very strongly that it should be an anonymous survey. So they went the old, you know, the old method of pen and paper, out during lunch, universal lunch. And they had students just anonymously fill out a survey. And that data actually showed us that universal lunch, which is something that was built into our new master schedule, was the number one, you know, most comfortable place that our students felt in the building throughout the instructional day. So it did give us some, some data, some real numbers to show us that master schedule is still working to meet the needs of our students.
As a parent of the kid who went through the change from the one to the other, I can tell you that, that universal lunch was a game changer. Not just the length of time, but the ability to build relationships with kids outside of your grades and socialize with them was an absolute game changer. And I think also the office hours, one of the unintended consequences of that, maybe it was intended by you guys, was the ability for those kids to build the relationships with the teachers that they needed to then go to them junior, you know, junior year and say, can I have a recommendation? Because you actually know who I am and we've built, we've spent, you know, the year or two years building that relationship outside of the, what was it, 29 minutes or something?
Yeah, so it was the, the lunch was only 26 minutes that we had before and.
Not just the class time.
Right, yeah, so class time would be 46 minutes, 49 minutes on certain days.
So they were just in and out and there wasn't that time when they could actually get to know the kids.
So what, you know, one of the things that you look at as feedback, we have other schools who are. So what, you know, one of the things that you look at as feedback, we have other schools who are coming to us now asking about this schedule that we have. And we had gone out to, I think, ten, eleven, twelve schools to look at it. I think we even visited, you know, Kevin where he was at the time. And now we have other schools asking us about the Byram Hills schedule. So I think it works for us, it might not work for others, but it was really done in a way where the students were always the ones leading sort of the, the next step of it, which was important.
We had student input and did a design challenge, which came out of global scholars in our work. Just got kicked off this, interesting.
Kevin?
Yeah, so.
Got the right guy here.
It just kicked me out. Yeah, so we, I forget what I was saying, but I do want to ask about unintended consequences. That's what Mia was talking about and Chris, just as a final question on this. Do you see unintended consequences, which could be positive or negative? Mia, I think you talked about a positive unintended consequence of the schedule, of the shift, because you're gonna expect any type of.
Yeah, so like, you know, like early on, obviously, it was a new, you know, the teachers did an amazing job trying to go from a forty-nine or forty-six minute model into sixty-four minutes. It's now sixty-three. We borrowed a minute from every period to increase office hours by, to get it to thirty minutes now. So what we saw were a lot of teachers shifted the ways in which they were, they were teaching their class. So not that they were all doing direct instruction, but certainly a portion of their lessons would have been in direct instruction. Now it's just exhausting to be able to, nobody can do that for sixty-three minutes.
Forces different.
Yes, yeah, it forces exactly those lessons to be different.
What's feedback from faculty? How do they find the schedule and?
Yeah, they, you know, that, it was funny because I thought about that when we were first going into it, like what is, you have to really have a pulse on it. And it was, this is really great. They have the ability to actually plan now where in the old model, their prep periods, they could only just get started and then they were going to the next class. This, this ability now to have a prep period and even if it's tied into lunch, allows them to plan on a much, much deeper level. They feel like it's, it's just a much more sophisticated way to teach. They feel like their lessons are, they can go in so many different directions. They can really go deeper into a lot of them. And I think they just feel like their relationships with kids are better because they can develop them.
Sounds like a college model.
Yeah.
Really getting to know your teacher and going deeper into the subject matter, so it's really good preparation for that as well.
Yeah, and just to piggyback off of that, we, through the Challenge Success Committee, last year we had our first alumni panel where we invited alumni back. And the feedback that they gave us was that they are so well-prepared and looking at their peers, who they're going to school with, they just kind of shake their head. And it's really in those times when they realize like how thoughtful the community is about helping them get to where they are.
And just, yeah, go on Larry.
So little anecdote, Emily, my daughter is a sophomore in college and she's in a co-op prep readiness course, you know, as they do co-ops at Northeastern, and she said, I'm so bored, we did all of this in science.
Sophomore in college, being bored. And speaking of the impact beyond high school, I just want to end with a final report that Jen will walk us through. But we're, a really interesting report, I think you'll find intriguing, is measuring the impact of students who go through Global Scholars and what is the impact of Global Scholars? So I'm gonna ask Jen to speak to this. And Jen, if you could sort of set this up of how you came to this and walk us through some of what you put together and what this amazing report is. And I haven't shared this with the board yet, but I will in your next packet. We were still putting the finishing touches on it.
Sure, so you know, Global Scholars is a relatively new program. We just started our eighth year and so, and it was something that didn't exist anywhere else. We were creating it from an idea that we had, that we knew we wanted to develop a program that helps students become globally competent in an authentic way. And so initially, a lot of the data that we collected was student survey data. We actually would survey the students twice a year, so in the middle of the year and at the end of the year, and really look at their experience, what they were learning and then make adjustments, you know, as we go. And that really helped us to build the program and build a program that, you know, was vertically aligned and sort of spiraled up.
Global Scholars is a three-year program for students.
Yeah, and but what we were thinking about recently is, and the thing that we convey to the students is, the big thing we do in Global Scholars is take action on a problem or an issue that students care about. But we talk about being able to measure the impact that you've had. So it's good to take action, it's good to care about something, but is the time and energy and research that you've put into it actually making a measurable difference? And so we started to think about, well, what do other organizations do to demonstrate their impact? So if, you know, if you donate to your college or university or a charity that you care about or NGO or a non-for-profit, you get these impact reports. So it talks about really, well, due to your funds, this is what we were able to do and this is what we were able to achieve. And so in Global Scholars, our big goal is to address the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals, you know, which were established in two thousand and fifteen. And there's these seventeen really ambitious goals. And the UN says we can meet them by twenty thirty. And so we frame everything we do around that to the students to say, what are we doing to get us closer to these goals? And those can be things like no poverty, zero hunger, gender equality. And students are really aligned themselves, you know, quite well with that. And so what we did was we put together a report that shows what our students did collectively to move sort of the bar on these goals. And sort of the exciting, sort of impressive part is that in many cases, sometimes it was a small measurement, but other times it was really big. And it's very motivating for the students to see like what I did actually made a difference in somebody else's life. Whether again, it was a few people's lives or a few thousand people's lives. And so that was sort of my idea between putting this report together. So the students could really see the impact of their work and how it had a real measurable difference. And the importance of also telling that story. So if you're a changemaker or someone who's pushing for change, you've got to always communicate what impact are you really having.
So can you give us an example, show us what's in the report and how you put this together?
I'll just show you a couple. So I set it up like, you know, again, hopefully it looks like sort of a real report like you might get.
It is real.
It is, I know.
Is it on?
So I start with an executive summary.
Kevin, make sure that's on, on the side.
We talk about sort of overall, the curriculum impact.
I'll do.
And the summary of it. And again, mentioning on, you know, how we're connected with SGGs. And really what, what I organized it around was those SGGs. And so for the ones that students' projects focused on, we had a quantifiable number. So if you just go to the next one, I'll just share a couple of sort of my favorites. So here's zero hunger. So as a result of what students did, over six hundred Westchester County food insecure families received expanded knowledge and access to healthy eating. We had some students who created a bilingual cookbook with ingredients that can be found at a food pantry. And then we had another student who created a bilingual flyer that educates people about food expiration dates. And what students realized through the research and their empathy interviews, that was sort of what people could use and could be helpful to improve their nutrition.
So these projects come around a design thinking process as students are developing their action projects.
So that's one example. And then if you could, let me go to the, keep going, one more. Here's another one, this is one of our favorites. So we have some connections to students and teachers in Kenya, Tanzania and Uganda. So as a result of what our kids did, specifically counted four hundred and seventy-two students received expanded access to education. We had development of a tutoring program and a school supply drive. And there's a little video there that's actually the students sending us a thank you. Their school is actually under a mango tree, that's where the school takes place. And they're holding the supplies that were sent to them from the kids in Byram Hills. And then just a couple of the ones I want to just highlight, keep going.
Are our kids doing the tutoring?
Yeah, we did virtual tutor, yeah. This is one of my favorites, so this is clean water and sanitation. So a result of what students did, they did a lot of research and a lot of interviews with people in Africa, but also experts in the field about access to water. And what they found out is that girls are going uneducated because many of them have to spend their whole day going to collect water. And the water that they're collecting is dirty and it's spreading disease, but they're completely out of the educational system because of the reliance on them to do that labor. So what they figured out is if we could raise a certain amount of funds, we could get ten water filtration systems. And they did, they got it, and that led to seventeen hundred students and teachers in Uganda now have access to clean water who didn't have it before. You know, so like, wow, that's like a number. And this, we just got, that thank you note is, oh, those are the kids from the school. So they sent us this thank you note to Charlotte, Darian and Emily, thanking them for the water filtration system.
So we talk about, you know, when we think about the design of Global Scholars was to help our students make an impact on the world.
Yeah.
And now we're able to actually measure it and show the impact. So if we're talking about how we use data, whether it's, you know, using a Renaissance star at the elementary level through the middle school and these data reports, through an impact report. You know, how are our students impacting the world beyond them? So there's measures about the impact on students themselves and the impact that our students have on the world, which is really the essence of our mission statement, is having our kids be, you know, responsible citizens and leaders of the next generation. And what other way to show it than through something like this, like an impact report? Really literally counting the number of students or teachers across the world in other places that are impacted by the result of this program.
Yeah, and it just really needs, as you can imagine, increase the motivation and desire, just really pride in what they're doing too. So they know it's, it's something special.
So I, we wanted to give you a snapshot of how we're using assessment data of all types and beyond just a summative assessment from given by the state or even an AP result, which is easy to quantify. But we're really taking on the challenge of quantifying things that are more challenging and those things we really value that align to our mission statement and our charge to really create the leaders of the next generation. So I hope tonight for our community and for our board that we were able to show from this amazing team of educators here and their colleagues back, sleeping right now, which you will be soon, that didn't have to come out tonight, and the teachers and our students and our community that supports all of these efforts. This is just a snapshot into the work that we're really striving to achieve to show that we are having value added in Byram Hills Education. We'll be able to give you a little bit of insight, I think, beyond just my state test charts and graphs, they're a little easier to put together.
Those are exciting too.
But this is also really exciting.
Thank you so much.
So much for all of you. Thank you, thank you for coming out.
Staying so late.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, goodnight.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I've been eating sugar high for a week, I feel like a globus.
Going for Jen, we'll go.
It's not Jen's report, she's always booked up. You're the president.
She, the budget, she's got to think about the budget, all right?
No, we have Kelly.
We can wait.
Who's doing the next report?
It's the, are you gonna do it, the budget materials? We have to talk about those, that's for discussion, Tim, right? Okay.
Now I'm gonna hit with the baseball.
All right.
All right. Next on the agenda is item thirteen point two, the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget materials. I know we have the Finance Advisory Committee Charge, the Budget Calendar and the Budget Guidelines. And this is up for discussion and action. Anything to talk about?
No, just your standard guidelines we do every year, really the big part is the calendar, just the dates being established. And first one coming January fourteen, very soon.
I've been on that job for a couple of years.
Almost the season.
If someone want to go, we want to go through the calendar, are we gonna do that tonight or?
Not yet, we don't have to do it yet.
Okay. Those are board meeting dates.
Yeah, they're, they're all pretty much aligned and have to be X number of days before this, this happens and X number of days after that. And so it's not really like we have a lot of flexibility.
So this needs action, can we have a vote to adopt these twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget materials?
Someone.
All in favor?
Wait, second, second.
All in favor?
At the same time, all right? I'm gonna use the board.
It's late.
Okay, next thirteen point three, the enrollment report.
Yes, we currently have twenty-three hundred thirty-seven students on beds day enrollment. So there could actually be kids who were absent on that day and don't get counted in the beds enrollment. And the, that is nineteen less.
Isn't that really true?
Yeah.
That's so bizarre.
Yeah.
That makes just.
Yeah, and how about, how about if you had a.
Sports numbers are what also determine all the sports sections and stuff like that.
Yes, they do, yeah.
That's.
So if there's a week, that gives up the flu.
You know, it's so funny, Mia, I never thought of it, you could game it.
If you're like two kids under, you called you say stay home today, you're good.
Yeah, I'm just gonna have a hundred kids stay home, we'll be in a next division.
Now that you're saying that, it's wild.
That's probably better going.
It's illegal, bro, it's illegal.
Edit this out.
Not us, other, other schools.
Illegal.
Boy, where are they, how do these rules?
Illegal and unethical, okay. So it is nineteen less than we projected. So that is our enrollment based on beds, finished.
Nineteen hundred.
Okay. Thirteen point four, the APPR Undue Burden Independent EValuator Hardship Waiver.
Yes, you recall that the teacher evaluation requirements are that administrators would have to travel to another building to observe teachers, is part of the requirement. For the last four years, we've been getting a waiver for that, you've been approving that waiver every year. We find it to be a hardship to ask Chris Walsh to go down to Coman Hill to observe teachers. We want administrators to stay in the building, work with teachers that way. We don't find any value in doing that, so we apply for the waiver every year.
Was there some adjustment to the state law that, did it have nothing to do with this?
Not with that, but it's also a new APPR will be coming down that will be required in twenty thirty-two.
That's on the year.
Yeah.
Oh, but it's not until twenty thirty?
Twenty thirty-two. Well, sometime between now and then, they haven't released the new regulations yet.
We'll almost have a full electric fleet at that time, right?
I'm expecting the new regulations on November.
And Scott will hopefully still be on the board.
See how fast it takes us to do it, so we don't do that. That's thirty twelve E.
Got it.
Have to get updated on that, Scott. So I'm asking the board to, if, to approve this and then that will allow us to approve this.
I ask for, thank you, Tim, a motion to approve the waiver.
So moved, second.
All right, all in favor?
Okay, thanks everybody.
And next, item thirteen point five, which is the BHF donation towards the Lights Learning Action. We are going to have a more robust discussion at the next meeting, but I know Jen would like to say a few words.
Sure, first of all, when we did the consent agenda, we had everybody here and I knew we were talking BHF. So many thanks to the BHF for the twenty thousand dollars toward Insta grants that they donated to the district. And we've seen an uptick in Insta grants, which is fantastic. The BHF has really been doing a great job of going to buildings, of meeting with teachers and faculty meetings. Our building reps are really trying to do a lot with both Insta grants and regular grants. So many thanks for that twenty thousand dollar donation toward Insta grants, much appreciated. And this topic, thirteen point five, is the donation toward Lights Learning Action. As everybody in the community probably knows right now, the BHF committed to a one million dollar donation toward Lights Learning Action. I've never seen anything like that, that is pretty amazing. And in our discussions with the BHF, they were wondering about donors and attribution to donors for donations that are made. One of the things that the BHF did was they gave us. Um one of the things that the B H E F did was they gave us sort of like a ask sheet uh that the board is going to discuss in more detail at the next agenda. But for now, I'd like to just go over what those asks are. First one involves an alumni walkway, uh which does exist in some other districts. And basically, they will be looking for alumni to purchase a quote unquote brick. We don't know if it's going to be a brick or a concrete piece. Um and they are looking at the area in front of the press box. And ha- if alumni make a donation, they could have their name on a brick. And those bricks will start at the press box and then they will go down the whole sidewalk walkway toward the high school. And then depending on how many alumni buy bricks, down the yellow brick road to the, down to the field. Um there is a lot of space and we know that we have a very invested alumni group. Um so many who have come back to this community to live and raise their own children. Um I know that this was something important for them. Um the second for lights learning action involves signage. They were asking um to put something temporarily uh to stay up until the end of twenty twenty eight. Um a cycle, a full cycle after the project honoring anybody who supported the initiative. Um that would include names of individual donors and corporations or anybody who did donate toward lights learning action. The um next one outside of Byram Hills High School, they were looking for potential to have corporate banners. Um sort of you see them on on fields, on the fences, the banners that are going around the fields. Um and inclusion um to stay up for one year post completion of the field. Um scoreboard, if um the B H E F legally, it would have to say the B H E F thanks whoever for their support of Byram Hills, um if they could put something like that on the scoreboard as well. Um we would not be able to just have donor names on the fences. It would have to actually say the same thing that the scoreboard would say, which would be the B H E F thanks so and so. We can't be advertising for that company, but we can allow the B H E F to thank them that way. That's another concept of theirs. Um they would like to discuss additional corporate donor recognition. And they want to come back with specific asks for high donors, so uh there may be something more coming. Um also, as they embark on this request, they want to um see if they can have opportunities for the B H E F for the logo either to be flashing on the scoreboard before games for a certain amount of time or on the welcome sign. Um or if there could be any kind of announcements thanking them um during those public sessions of games. And um the very last thing that they said is a disclaimer that the Board of Education would reserve the right to remove any names at its sole discretion um regarding that. So um that's kind of the general gist of it and then.
And it's all pending for discussion and approval.
So, yeah, so just this is their ask and then we will have further discussion at the next meeting.
Yeah, just so the uh community knows, the next meeting, we will do that out in public and we will discuss the B H E F asks and we will vote.
Yeah.
Great.
And we care very much about supporting the work that they do and, you know, there's all the talk to council and have all of that informed um decision making process for this board. We appreciate the support and all the thought that went into that. Unbelievable. Yeah, amazing. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was amazing.
Yeah, they are tremendous.
Incredible.
Excellent. Thank you, Jen.
Thank you.
The next staff reports, back to you.
If you have any.
Oh, yeah, I sure do. Thanks.
Hope that works.
Let's guess what it's going to be. Ta-da. Alright, so student highlights, Tyler Bond, um this organization raised over fifteen thousand. This is for Food for Thought Initiative, um giving supplies and lunches to six hundred students in Tanzania. He started this Arma to Africa, this cultural exchange program. He did this Hoops for Hunger thing at Wampus where it was a fundraiser um to help support those efforts. And he's supported by the Wild Nature Institute, all to improve attendance in Tanzania and inspire students at home. Pretty tremendous. Keep them coming. Gaga Club, right? This is the growth and awareness group for Alzheimer's, Gaga. They participated in the annual walk this year and our Ashley Stangle, who's one of the co-presidents, was honored as this year's mission speaker, delivering a message to over one thousand participants. Her co-president Inara Lillani and the VP Spencer Wilk and Charlie Zimmerman helped to spearhead the event. And they garnered thirty six thousand six hundred forty four dollars for a cure for Alzheimer's. Tremendous. I also have to say that these are not um educator inspired initiatives. Our clubs and activities are inspired by our kids. It has always been the way. Um students come to us, they express an interest in something, they go themselves and get a mentor who's going to help them. The mentors do like the, they really don't like um receive much compensation to do that. Um in the, especially in the beginning years, to see if if one of these is going to take shape. And um so these kids are even more amazing. We have our National American Commended Scholars, yay, Emily Goldman, Casey Goldstein, Chloe Cole, Sebastian Lashmitt, Owen Lee, Julia Maheritz, who's not in the picture, Sarah Park, Emmett Woland. Um they're among thirty four thousand students being recognized and placed among the top fifty thousand who took the PSATs. Pretty amazing. They're so happy, they are. Tremendous. Our student government, awesome. This, this was absolutely phenomenal. Kids choosing kids. Um serving student government this year, President Charlotte Karp, Vice President Jake Levy, Treasurer Emily Goldman, and Secretary Abby Rondo.
Jen, it's important to note this is a student elected student government, which is now required in New York.
Yeah. Yeah. And look at all of these representatives, senior, junior, sophomore, freshman class representatives as well. These are our kids interested in student government. We have faith in the world, right? Like good things to come. I I love it.
The rank voting and um it was a real civics lesson that.
Yeah.
Sophisticated.
Yeah, it was. And they looked at different, there's different models.
Pretty phenomenal.
It was really cool.
And you will see around you, um we commented on this piece by Bryce tonight. Um but you will see that our students were featured in the Armaq Outdoor Art Show. Um over thirty five students showcased their artwork, pretty amazing. And you see it today in the room around you. So we are enjoying. Thank you so much to our students. World Language Induction Ceremony, sixty seven seniors were inducted into World Language Honor Society. And we had a handful of students who were uh being inducted for multiple languages. Congratulations. Oh my gosh, I'm really, I don't even know what to say about it. If you haven't had an opportunity to go and watch Maya in action, you really need to. Our Khan Edison Scholar of the Week, uh exceptional accomplishments both in the classroom and off the field. And um we also have our sophomore swi- dive and swim. Um Eva is, Moran is a tsunami girl, swim and dive, set a new school record, achieved section qualifying time in the two hundred yard relay with two minutes, one second, one point five seven. She also hit a New York State qualifying time in the hundred backstroke. And freshman Farah Rosenman qualified for sectionals in diving. This is really the first time we're hearing about that, right? It's pretty impressive. And John Cavada, recognized by the College Board. Uh he was selected for a National Hispanic Recognition Program and received the distinction for outstanding academic achievement. And I have to say also just an all around terrific human being and and um great student. Yes, great.
Yeah, great kid.
Spirit Week, look at what has happened to Byram Hills. There was a time in my life in this school district where you sometimes saw a Byram Hills shirt on a kid in the high school. Okay, now, I don't know if the parents have more Byram Hills attire than the students. But certainly everyone is always outfitted in Byram Hills gear. And even from very early ages, our kids are Bobcats. So um we want to thank you to the Byram Hills Education Foundation Night that took place Sunday on the Turf Field at the culmination of all of our homecoming events. We want to thank all the students who came out to play um in their sporting events. And also the younger students from different outside clubs and activities who came to play at halftime and all of that. And our student athletes never disappoint. I also have to say, one of the most beautiful things as a superintendent is to go to these games and watch the numbers of students who come to watch their classmates play and how wonderful they are in the stands, right? Occasionally, you know, you may have a situation where an adult says or does something, like whether, you know, like we have visitors. I'm not saying anything against Byram Hills families, but you know, visitors. Um but we don't get that from our kids. They are phenomenal, phenomenal.
The Byron Bleacher creatures, right?
Yes. And go Bobcats.
Again.
Thank you.
Jen, you want me to go forward with regionalization? I have a brief presentation on it.
Yes, regionalization um is, yeah, just very briefly. Um so one would look at a word like regionalization and you would say, well, what does that mean?
We're merging with someone.
One would think that's what that means. We are told that is not what that means.
I'm telling you, it's not.
They're, they're saying it's not. So basically, New York State Education Department has asked us to develop these very extensive reports that we're going to submit every ten years. And they are going to glean information from this report that we send that will help them to support districts that don't have opportunities for kids that other districts have. We have no idea how that happens, except if you've offered remote classes. Uh because it's impossible to take kids from one place to another, um to look at resources. They, you know, they did happen to say something the other day about foundation aid when they came to meet with the superintendents. That word slipped, a foundation aid, so I don't know if they're looking at that for one of the measures.
Are they requiring direct collaboration with other districts or it's more just a report?
No, after you do the report, you actually have to have an action plan.
Yeah.
Right, so Tim.
Well, I think, yeah, you covered sort of why, yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't make any sense to anyone and it is, it is all information the state already has.
It's a challenge, it's quite, that's a faithful listen. Yeah.
But they're asking us to compile it, to then submit it so that they can assess it and it makes no sense.
It's basically, this is this process where they're doing a strength and needs review, which they dropped on us in early September. It's due November first. It's a forty seven page report, which is basically data um that the state has. Cause they give us a report to fill in the boxes and then they ask us for a narrative. And then this will go through what they call regionalization plan convening. So that's where all the superintendents get invited together in Southern Voces, we're in our region. And then the superintendent of Voces will talk to these thirty seven, this, you know, superintendents.
With their plan.
With their plan, then he will present a plan to State Ed. And then State Ed will come back saying they have questions about it, then we have to get, take their feedback. And then this Voces superintendent coordinates the activities, like saying, Jen, why don't you call, you know, Scarsdale and you guys can work on this?
Yeah, why don't you just become like Byramville instead of Byram Hills and plus.
Or something like that. That's what we do. Yeah, so that's what I'm gleaning from all this. It's really this networking, you know, somehow. Um I know people at Voces were not in in touch with all this before this dropped on us. It was a really short timeline, which we find surprising.
Just, is it uncanny that it's during the review of navigation?
Setting off some alarms. It sounds strange.
Yeah, right.
It is, right? I know, it must like the timeline is consistent.
It's like a game. Yes.
I mean, I don't know where this is coming from. It could, it look, it could be that let's leverage our strengths and maybe there is a role for online classes and it could be a win-win for a lot.
If they had only said that.
Right.
About the online classes.
Or given some time to roll it out.
Right.
It seems like there's no time to roll it out. Also, I'm talking about it in fact.
But it seems like it's either cost containment exercise
Yeah.
or it's something to do with money being rejiggered around and.
Yeah, two theories we hear is one is it's coming from rural districts that don't have the resources that suburban districts have
Okay.
and city districts have. And the other is that it is somehow related to consolidation in the future.
Well, that's, I mean, clear.
That's, you know, but they're saying it's not. Well, we don't know. Um we just know I have to finish this report by November first and we'll go from there. This will be, this is supposed to then be final. The plans are supposed to be in place by twenty twenty six, the twenty twenty six school year.
So twenty thirty seven electric buses, right? And then we're gonna have to consolidate school districts in like five years after that. That's ridiculous.
Maybe it's when, when everybody figures out that they can for the buses, then they want to consolidate.
Consolidate.
It's the same money consolidation.
Make that part of your plan.
Yeah, it's really.
Wow.
So we're, we're confused by it in the region, cause there wasn't a lot of capacity building. We, we did not learn about this over the summer. Um it just literally was dropped on us.
Superintendents met with New York State Ed for the first time last Friday about this. It's the first time they addressed superintendents about it and the tenor in the room was not good.
I call Voces.
Because nobody understands this and and there's no rationale for why we're being asked to do this thing that they already have. And to call it regionalization means one thing.
It's setting up a lot of alarms.
It sure is. Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I was curious.
Yeah.
There have been other attempts to try to consolidate districts over the course of time.
Sure.
So that was just to give the.
And you can't consolidate the rural districts. They're too far away from each other.
Right.
Right? So where would it end? Here.
Right. So to keep you updated on that and we'll keep you posted as the process as we learn more.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
I'm, I'm this worried and this annoyed.
That's what it is. So there you go. Timeline is, my big arrow is, look, we have to submit by November first and then we'll go from there.
That's. Uh-huh.
And then Jen will go to convenings and she'll report out on what that's like.
Yeah.
The convenings, that's bizarre.
I know. It's like the conjuring.
Anyway, two, more to be reported on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have anything else?
It's all for me.
That's it. How about you, Kelly, anything?
Real quick, and welcome to our world of reporting for states like you every year. My financials, it's the same. They have the information.
Well, that.
You have to put it in.
Yeah.
They're happy. And then they say you've entered.
Woo.
Yeah. So, so just a quick, quick uh on a lecture hall. So this, I took this uh this morning.
Oh.
That looks great.
Kelly, alright. So we tried not to leave the boxes for the TVs, I just put them up. But uh so we're, we're almost there. We're just waiting. The uh furniture's supposed to be here next week. We got a couple of touch up items that we gotta take care of.
That looks great.
Wow.
Looks really beautiful.
It's kind of beautiful.
Why?
I guess they're board members for that back wall.
That's what I just said. We said it was gonna be red.
We were like red, blue, red, blue. We're blue.
Call board member, call board member blue.
We can put our board member.
Board blue. Byron board blues.
We could do our portraits on the back.
I love it, yes.
Now we're gonna flash them on the TV screens.
Board color painting.
Throughout the year. It's funny, Ira, Ira, Ira.
So good.
No, it looks great.
Looks great.
John Baxter, amazing job, John Baxter coordinating with a bunch of vendors to get this done and just changes here, changes there.
Kelly, nice job.
Yes. Yeah.
Wow.
Awesome.
So when do they anticipate?
Ellie, you deserve a lot of credit.
I was just gonna ask that too. When do they anticipate students being able to start using that?
Next week?
Yeah, I mean, as soon as that uh.
As soon as the furniture.
Then you can access it though. It's not a construction zone. Oh, no? Okay. That's great.
Yeah, from the back corner.
What will it be used for? What will the team get to enjoy it?
Yeah, what will it be used for?
Hell, they will.
For lunch?
Classes during school and during the lunch period.
Lunch.
Right?
Yeah, it's great.
And then in terms of the, the big project, Learning Commons is really on, I shouldn't say that, but on schedule. Everything's good, a low budget. So doing really well, not a lot of change orders. Small ones you saw today, just kind of small little fittings, but uh it's coming along. So we're gonna be.
Congratulations.
Tracks.
Amazing.
If not on time, but whatever. Okay.
Thank you for being so on top of it, Kelly.
I can't, Kelly, am I correct in assuming they'll come through the back right corner?
Yes.
Yeah.
The front left will be still closed off for.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Few more months, right? Just, just checking.
Yes. Right. Yeah.
Great, uh, good it?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Kelly. Uh board reports. Uh I have nothing. What about committees? Any?
I have a quick.
Uh Lori, uh.
Um a truly authentic example of democracy occurred last week. Um NISPA's twenty twenty four virtual annual business meeting. Um for six hours, more than three hundred and fifty delegates considered all thirty seven resolutions and twenty six positions were approved.
Thank you for, yeah, thank you Lori for doing that and attending.
Thank you. Thank you.
I get to vote on who gets to be the delegate next.
Is it an appointment or a vote?
I will, uh, no, I will appoint since I've done it for so serious.
I thought you wanted to do it again.
You know, I think it was.
I promised her she didn't have to do it again.
I actually think it was probably better when it was in person, because doing it online for that long is hard.
I mean, you can fold laundry, but other than that. Hmm, you're kind of on screen a lot.
Um, I guess I have two quick reports. Um I attended the September B H E F meeting. Um which was great. It was so nice to see some familiar faces, some new faces. They've already had a bunch of um successful community events, including the kindergarten back to school night reception for the parents. Um they did a table at the Cider Donut Festival at IBM, um the successful movie night, which I think you mentioned, right?
Yeah.
Homecoming. Um they have had several grant proposals already in the pipeline and they're encouraging teachers to come up with some more grant Instagram ideas. Um and of course, they're continuing their efforts, like we already said, to support the district's initiative for lights learning in action through their fundraising and we're so appreciative of our partnership with them, of course. So we thank them for all their efforts and that. And then um we had a meeting with the town supervisor, a monthly meeting with the town supervisor, which was very productive. Um you know, the district's interests and town interests obviously intersect, so it's always good to communicate with them. And we discussed the pro- progress of various pending building progress projects happening throughout town. So it's good to stay on top of those situations and we appreciate our cooperation with the town as well.
Just have a few quick, very quick things, um PTSA, there was a meeting, I guess it was last week, I think it was last week. Um great meeting, firing on all cylinders, um they're obviously heavily involved in, yeah, very high attendance, involved at every schools here.
High attendance. Yes.
Um they're working on parent education, they're just really firing on all fronts, so we appreciate all their efforts. West Putt um went to an advocacy meeting, um which is really the beginning to try to form the agenda for the year. One of the main focuses will be foundation aid, but there's a lot of other issues as well, including electric buses is a big one. I'm trying to make the regulations more reasonable and more affordable for all of us. Um and then um Jen and I had a meeting with a few districts together with Shelley Mayer. Um talking also about some of the advocacy issues and also talking to um Senator Mayer about the foundation aid report when it comes out just so that we're prepared to be as thoughtful as possible in terms of fighting for our districts, so we appreciate her support on that. And um then the NISBA convention is coming out this weekend and so early next week, so.
And senior keynote speaker.
Speaker.
And a speaker, but I'll also try to attend some sessions, so I'll come back and uh give your report.
Great.
We're taking a mini bus. Is it in, where is it, in Circuits?
Wouldn't that be crazy?
It's in New York City, in the city, yeah.
Oh, the city.
I went to, I went a couple years ago, it was great with me. When, I went night, you, what, what, it is speaking.
I'm speaking on Sunday. This is, next, this is, Sunday, yeah, yeah.
This, will it be livestreamed?
Uh no, it's not live.
No, it's only in person.
Yeah.
Very nice.
Um very quickly, I went to the um the uh PTSA, Byram Hills PTSA meeting and it was a very dedicated and robust uh group of parents that run it and a lot of initiatives coming up. Around Halloween, they're doing different things and, or maybe they did it last year, there's a boo bash coming.
Oh, yeah.
Uh along with the window painting and a lot of things coming uh down the road, so they're they're in full swing and they're great. And then we had a policy committee meeting, started early talking about the um, what the policy will be about lights on the field when they are uh implemented and we're going to send that to some ideas and and wait for some ideas back from the athletic advisory committee. And when they have some ideas, they'll come back to us, we'll look at them and then we'll bring them to the board, so. Right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um I was at Challenge Success last month. Uh a couple of things real quick, uh that's on the agenda for this year's meetings with the student body and the teachers and and parent, all the stakeholders. Um they want to do a defines success, success video. Last year's video was I feel, which was done by all the students and it was very powerful. So this year will be, what does success mean to you, how does Byram Hills define success? It'll all be like student driven and with their feedback and so that should be very interesting to see what the student body has to add to that. The other thing which is coming up is also uh cell phones in the classroom, which is coming to the forefront on a lot of different venues. Um so there'll be what kind of data we can collect, addiction, impact on sleep, phone free days. So again, that'll be interesting to see what the student body comes back, what debt, what kind of data comes, uh is collected from that and see what feedback and how we can expand upon that through uh Challenge Success.
Great.
Thanks, Patrick, Athletic Advisor, you want to?
That's how changes need to happen and not.
It comes from the kids, it comes from the kids, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, there we go, it's a comment that was nice though. So uh two weeks ago, me and I attended the first athletic advisory uh council committee, committee meeting. And uh it was really just a get to know you with the teachers, coaches, students and representatives from the board. The one thing that stood out to me, having been on the the committee a few times now, was the amount of student athletes who were present.
So many.
I think it was like thirty, which like usually it was like fifteen.
Yeah, wow.
And um Rob made a point of saying that this year they took applications, a lot of people applied, the coaches and teachers weighed in to see who, you know, would be appropriate to be on the committee.
There was a waiting list.
There was a waiting list, mostly juniors and seniors, in fact, I think only juniors and seniors. But the amount of uh interest from our students was, is off the charts, so it was nice to see that.
That's great that they're engaged in that.
Really good.
And our athletics program has just exploded. I mean, we have more offerings now and more merge teams and opportunities for kids to play sports. We're offering sports that we never offered before and kids are.
Regionalization.
Regionalizations.
Yeah, that's our regionalization. Yeah, we're verge, verge sports. That's right, that's how it should happen. That's right. Maybe that could be the recommendation, people do that when they can.
I think that committee in particular, I'm not saying it's not true of other committees, but I witnessed it with this committee, is that I think the kids see very quickly things they say actually happening. And I think that's, that they're so energized by that and they they wanna get, I I think the word is spread that they really want to get involved because they feel like it really makes it, it makes a difference, they see changes happening.
Just a few years ago, homecoming were, the the games were just at night and they really talked about making it a weekend and making it a weekend event and having more things happen on weekends and that's what happened this year.
Yeah.
So, and the lights, they were right, very vocal uh three years.
Thanks to Rob and Scott for leading that effort and being receptive.
Yeah, very well born meeting, I have to say.
That's great.
Yeah, Scott, Scott does a really good job.
Well done, Scott.
Scott is really brought it to a new level.
Great, thank you everybody, okay, on to, any communications to the board? Anybody? Okay, great.
Thank you for being board members.
Uh you're welcome, uh let's see, approval of minutes, let's start with the July ninth, twenty twenty four meeting. I think Melissa, Lori and Scott were not that one, so everyone.
I was there.
No, I I was not there.
I'm just reading what's in front of me, I don't remember, but it's.
Wasn't I? Didn't I log on, I went to line, I logged on?
Oh no, I was there, I was there. We went, we logged on to the.
Lori, you logged on.
I was on the whole time.
You logged on.
I don't think you were able to log on to the.
No, I was on the whole meeting.
Great, Lori, you can vote, alright, Melissa and Scott, you can't.
Yep.
Alright, um can I have a motion to approve the July ninth, twenty twenty four minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? All those who stand, great, okay. And next, the September seventeenth, twenty twenty four meeting, I think uh just Lara.
I'll be there.
Great, uh all all those in favor?
So moved.
So, can I have a motion?
So moved.
All those in favor, thank you Melissa. Okay, great. And now, um motion to adjourn the meeting, now that was quick.
And that was a long meeting, thank you everyone.
Second you.
We need, we need, all in favor?
Second.
Thank you. You can just.
Thank you, thank you, getting one second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Those are the best.
So nice.